All right, good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, December 6, 2022. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge. Mr. Hoffman, if you could read our community prayer?
Sure. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all, that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces, in our first responders, in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Thank you. All right, next up is our citizens' participation portion of the meeting. We ask that any residents that want to speak, speak to something on the agenda and keep their remarks to three minutes. Is there anyone? Sir? Yeah, right up to the microphone. If you just give your name and address for the folks at home, please.
My name is Dan Farini. I live on Fosdick Road. And I'm here, like many of the other people are tonight, requesting, we have an issue going on with the wells in our area going dry. And we suspect it's from the sand mining coming from Johnson's bogs. Therefore, we're asking the Select Board to put a cease and desist order until it can be evaluated what is causing this, because numerous people are here who have lost their wells have gone dry. The other issue we're asking is that our town council take a look at the Attorney General's finding and appeal that for on the cranberry bog, I'm sorry, the solar battery farm and slide solar installations. So we're asking the board to review those tonight with everybody here and see what you can do for us, the people of Carver. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Dwemer, 162 Clement Street. I'm just gonna piggyback on what Dan said. As far as putting in a cease and desist order, we would also like you to meet with the residents that have had their wells go dry and figure out how they're going to become whole again. I believe that permit says that if it is caused by the sand mining and the operations on the cranberry bogs, that the cranberry owner is responsible for any damage to the wells. And I'm assuming that would also have to do with wells going dry and if wells need to be redug. I believe some of these people are going to have to get artesian wells because they haven't been able to find water until 400 feet, and that's a problem, considering that our aquifer and the way that our community is set up, that's not right. That's, it's, hydraulically, it's not right. Also, we would like to have a forensic evaluation of that area and see where all of this is coming from.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Judith Pratt, and I live at 284 Meadow Street. And I have Bates Pond in my backyard. And I have picture here that you can all look at, just pass around and look at if you want. This rock is at the back of the pond, and I've lived there since 1990. And you have never seen the bottom of the ground under the rock. And just this grass here, this used to all be covered with water. And on the rock, it shows you, especially the bottom part, how high it normally is. And it's so low. And we've had many droughts before, and we have never, ever, and I know they use it for cranberry bogs in the fall. There's a set of bogs next down the road. But the thing of it is, is that it's never been this low. And I just thought you all would be interested.
Thank you.
So I'm just gonna pass that on. We think that the water's being used for the Mackey site.
What, I'm sorry, for the what?
That the water from the pond is being used for the Mackey site.
Okay.
And in the sand mining is like, when they sand mine, it could change the direction of the water flow, too. And where I live in that area, I'm concerned myself about the whole thing. Like I said, the pond has never been that low, ever.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can the board keep this photo? All right. Mr. Fenney, I think we have a number of people here concerned about a couple of things that we have later on the agenda on your town administrator update. So I think it might be prudent for the board to take your town administrator update out of turn and have you do that right now, at least for those couple of things.
So there's actually two, I think.
Right.
The Attorney General's decision on warrant articles.
That's, that's right.
And the Great Meadow area private wells, so. So the Attorney General's decision on the warrant articles, in November, the Attorney General ruled that, in their decision, that it was contrary to the state law, chapter, is it 48 or 38? 38.
Section 3.
Yep, section 3. So they ruled that it did not fall within the parameters. Let me just grab my notes on that, just so I not, I didn't know we were going this way.
No, that's mine. Take your time. I know we caught you a little bit off guard.
Okay. So here's the decision. So, so the town voted place 11 and one half month prohibition on the use of the land for the town of battery storage and then also the solar moratorium. Because both prohibitions violate general law, chapter 48, section 3, and are not grounded in articulated evidence of public health, safety, or welfare concerns sufficient to justify the prohibition on solar uses, we disapprove them. So these are the two moratorium warrant articles that were passed at town meeting in April. So those, because it was actually a 10-page decision, probably one of the longest decisions I've seen, and it really gets into the protection, the state's protection of solar use and their policies in pursuing that, especially under 48. One of the, one of the issues that I see about doing, and somebody said they want to have a, see if we would file an appeal or something. One of the issues with that, I did reach out to council and see what that would cost us in legal fees and so forth. And it's estimated about $15,000. And, you know, is that something that'll break the bank for the town? Probably not. But the big issue is that it would probably take a year or two or three to get the appeal heard and done. And this is 11 and a half month moratorium. So it would be moot at some point where the time would have expired on the warrant article anyway. So what I'm doing is authorizing the committee that I set up to look at drafting warrant articles for the next town meeting, to continue on doing that. They're doing a great job. I know two of our select people are on that. And, you know, and reviewing the laws, looking at ways in which we can put in reasonable restrictions or protections with these. So that's something that we'll continue on until hopefully they have something prepared for town meeting.
And just to that point, I just want to make it clear to the public, but I did get a couple of emails about that from folks who were concerned that because the moratorium was turned down, that we might be terminating those committees. There's no plans to terminate those committees.
No.
We plan to let them go forward with their work and let them complete their actions and make any recommendations they have for to town meeting, correct?
Correct.
Good, okay.
Mark, can I jump in there? Full disclosure, I'm on that committee, and I would, my heart is pounding, I would respectfully have to disagree with your opinion on how things are going, Bob. I don't feel like we've made much progress at all. And I actually met with Tom Bott and the Chair Bruce Mackey before the decision came down to express my concern with how little I thought the committee had accomplished. And I left that meeting very upset because they told me that they had no desire to move forward writing a bylaw for battery storage because Mr. Bott had talked to someone, he says he talked to someone from Eversource, and they didn't think they would put another battery in town. So I hate to say it, but I don't feel very good about what the committee is doing. And I just want to get that out there. And I've raised issues in the committee that we haven't been working as hard as I think we should. I've raised issues outside of the committee, and I want the public to know that because this was passed at town meeting. It was a big deal. And I want, I want you guys to know that it's not being respected. The vote of town meeting is not being respected and acted on. The intent of the article, in my opinion, is being dismissed. And I have, I've spoken out on that in and out of meetings. I think it's wrong that we're ignoring their, the AG's decision. And I do have to wonder why a little bit, because I...
Well, again, you're speaking to that committee.
Yeah, but...
I think this, that's a conversation you probably should have with that committee.
Yeah, but, but I'm just saying, Mr. Fennessy said that he was happy with what the committee was doing, even though the article was shot down. And as someone on the committee, I'm saying it's not going that well.
Okay.
But I wish we would do something more about the decision, because I do have to wonder, when was the last time the AG said no to one of our bylaw changes? And did the town just kind of roll over and say, okay? So I think if this is something that the town meeting voted for, I feel like we should follow through. And if we can't get to the AG, let's meet with our local reps. There's got to be something we can do, because I do feel like town meeting is being ignored or dismissed. So I don't disagree with what's being said and the emails that we've received and the information that we're being given, so.
Mr. Fennessy, can you have another conversation with town council?
Yeah.
And see if there's some avenues that he feels we can follow.
And again, I just don't want the people to get confused, thinking that this was to stop the battery storage or to stop utilizing cranberry bogs or somewhere else to put up solar. That wasn't the intent of those two warrant articles.
Right.
It was specifically just a moratorium for a piece of time to do this review, which they're doing, which is being done on that committee. And then with the idea of possibly putting out a warrant article. And, you know, and I would hope that you would stay on the committee, because I think you're a valuable voice on that committee.
Oh, I'm not leaving it. I just, I feel like I'm...
I didn't know if that's where you were going with that.
No, I'm...
That you were unhappy and you didn't want to be on it.
No, I am unhappy, because I want to do the work, and I feel like the work's not getting done, so.
How about the Great Meadow?
Speak louder there, I guess.
The Great Meadow wells.
What's that?
The Great Meadow.
Oh, and the other one. Okay, so and the other one was the Great Meadow wells area. So this, let me get that, I'm out. So there was issues on that. We were made aware last week that at some point there was somebody having an issue with one of the wells.
Excuse me, I think it's not one person.
No, I'm not finished. I'm not finished.
Okay.
Okay. So there's one person that contacted us about the issue with their well. And during that period, there was, there was an issue that there might have been a water flow issue or a dry well. Our Board of Health looked into that, Kevin Ford. Rick, this was late last week, because on Friday, we found out that through his contacts that the pumping of one of the water sources into another, whether that caused that, that, you know, may have had an effect on that, but there's no determination yet whether it caused it. Ultimately, they shut that off and decided that they would not pump water anymore. And beyond that, they replaced the wells. There was actually two wells on Locust Street ultimately, and one on Great Meadow. And they replaced the owner of the land on the earth removal, replaced those wells and took care of that situation. Tomorrow, they're looking at the one that's on Great Meadow. And if that's still an issue, now that they stopped pumping any water out, if it's still an issue, they'll deal with that one, too. So from my understanding, there's nobody else that's come forward having an issue with a dry well or something. And if they do, they should go forward. The owner of the property will be at the Earth Removal Committee meeting tomorrow night. So I, that's part of, and you're right, I think...
What's happening is they've gone below the water level of the wells, and they've pumped so far down that the wells are going dry. Now we start, you're starting to get water again, but the issue is still there, where they have gone below the water level of the wells, and they're going to continue again. I was out there today, and they were working it again, and they're working...
So again, from my understanding, they're not pumping anything.
All right. Mr. Fennessy, can I ask you, please, to just keep this board informed via email if we need to?
Yes.
Take some further actions? We'll do whatever we need to do, but just please keep this board informed.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted a clarification. So when you say the landowner, you mean Van Johnson?
Yes.
And he has replaced two wells?
He's already replaced two, and he's looking at the third one tomorrow with.
Okay, and he's...
He has a company going up.
And he has said he's not going to use that pump anymore?
And that's shut off.
So how is he supposed to do dust control? Because that's been an issue, too.
I don't know. You know, again, he'll be at the meeting tomorrow.
He can bring a water truck in, yeah, okay.
Yeah, he may, yeah.
And that, did you say that issue was that on the Earth Removal Committee agenda for tomorrow? Did you say that?
I don't know if it's actually on there. I would assume it is.
It is not.
It is not.
But he will be there at the meeting.
Does public announcement be made that anybody who is having issues with their wells in Great Meadow, you know, by the jam? And can something go out publicly so that people know to come to you and that it will be looked into and investigated? Because saying it here, there's only a handful of people here. Like, I'm a worst diamond one. All these people live on Great Meadow in that area, that's why we get...
Mr. Fennessy, can you discuss that with the Board of Health?
I will.
And see what recommendations they have?
Yeah.
Okay. You have one other item on your...
I just had a quick question, if I can interrupt real quick. So just to clarify, I know the conditions of that permit said that there's an issue they should contact the Earth Removal Committee. How many, do you know how many residents of that area contacted Earth Removal?
I don't. And I, you know, again, I think if they were contacting them, they would have contacted me, too.
Could you inquire? Could you inquire, just let us know?
Yeah, I will.
You have one other item on your town administrator update, but we do have...
We'll put that off.
Yeah, we, I want to, we have someone waiting here for an appointment to a committee, so I want to try to move that along if we can. So we have applicant Patricia Cooney applying for the Community Preservation Committee. Is Patricia here? Thank you.
Hi.
Welcome. Welcome back.
I told you I'd be back. I'm Patty Cooney from Five Cancer Berry Path. I just, like I said, I want to get involved in the town. As you can see, there's a lot of us here that are concerned with what's going on. I think having the open space, you know, in town is very important to a lot of people. That's why they moved here. They like having, you know, beautiful bogs to go out to. And I love the fact that the bog people keep them nice and, you know, we have some of them that we don't agree with the way that they're treating stuff. So it's definitely something that the, you know, the town needs to keep an eye on and balance people being able to do things on their land, but also keeping the, you know, the small-town feel and the outside areas in good condition for the animals to have and people to enjoy, you know, because that's what we pay us, you know, all these people here. And we pay taxes to make sure that things stay the way they are, because that's why a lot of people live here, you know? They want nice outdoor areas. And I would definitely like to try to get on to, you know, whatever committee that I can, so I can start getting involved and try to listen to what the people have to say. That's what I've been out collecting signatures for different petitions. And I, you know, I hear what everybody has to say as far as not always knowing what's going on. So that would be something that I would definitely want to try to get involved in is making it more accessible for the people to be able to know what's going on with different things, you know, as far as happenings in the town that, oh, we have this nice area that, you know, we want to do this with. What does the town think we should do with it? You know, they have different funds for, you know, doing community type of areas, like how they have the Girl Scout little area by the police station in the library, you know, keeping people up to date with those types of things. And I just, I just want to try to help as much as I can for the town and the people here. I grew up here. It's a big part of me, so.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for Ms. Cooney?
All right, well, welcome back. I'm happy to see you back.
Thanks.
I have to ask, how did you find out about this opening?
Just looking on the town pages and word of mouth. You know, like I said, I want to be involved. I'm trying to pay attention as much as I can. I had, you know, younger kids, but now they're getting older, so now I have time to be able to put my focus on, you know, what's going on in my town. Like I said, I grew up here. I've watched it go from, you know, little tiny, tiny town. I mean, it's still pretty small, but things are changing and, you know, we need to pay attention to how they change so it doesn't turn into things that we don't want it to be. You know, I think everybody lives in this town because it is a small town. It's got that community feel and, you know, that outdoor space that you can go out into and enjoy. You know, when you get out of work, you don't want to be sitting with people on top of you everywhere. You want to be able to go out and enjoy the outdoors. And the preservation is a big part of that, you know, paying attention to what we do to our environment. Thanks.
Anyone else? Nope. All right. Is there a, is there a motion?
I'd make a motion that we appoint Patricia Cooney to the Community Preservation Committee.
I'll second that.
If I may, so that's through 6:30, 2025.
Okay.
Okay. Through 6:30, 2025.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is your name. Congratulations, Ms. Cooney. Don't forget to visit the town clerk and get this morning.
Now, when, when do we do that? Now, or...
They're open till 7 o'clock tonight, so you could do that right now.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have an update on town hall siding and library HBAC repair and replacement from Dave Sedentoff. Mr. Sedentoff, thank you for coming in this evening.
Thank you for having me. Good evening. Just a couple of quick updates on the project. First, the town library. The contract has been signed between the town and the awarded contractor, which is Apex Corporation. They actually were out to last Friday for a site visit with the rigger they're going to be using as a subcontractor to evaluate the site. One of the trickier parts of the project is they have to get some larger equipment up into the attic. And the way we designed the mechanical, the engineer, was to minimize that, but there still has to be some, because we're going, because it's a public building, we do have to introduce fresh air per building code. So a couple of the larger units are going to be energy recovery units. Those have to get up in the attic space. That's one of the things they were looking at Friday. I have not heard back from them yet, but what he was looking at is the best way to do that. And then he was going to look at equipment to see what would fit after they looked at, all right, what's probably the best way for them to get into that space and rig it. Then they were going to look at availability of product, because there's a little bit of an issue right now. He doesn't think it's going to be too big of a problem. But right now, he's looking at starting sometime this month to start getting into the space. But he didn't want to start work and then have to cease work because of equipment delays. So he's hoping to get enough equipment in where he can start work and continue through. And I will keep, as I've said before, I'll keep the library informed, this board and the town administrator, as far as once they commence. There will be a little bit of, we'll cause a disruption to the library with workers. We will try to minimize that as much as possible. Carol's been made aware, and she's been great, you know, she'll accommodate them the best they can to keep the library open, keep everybody safe and keep it comfortable. So the main, the plan is to get that larger equipment in. Then they're going to start working on getting all the new equipment in throughout the winter months. Come springtime, we'll be towards the end of the project, hopefully, if everything falls into place right. Then we'll shut down the heating equipment at the end of April, May, once we're out of heating season, demo the old heating equipment, and at that time, the new equipment should be ready to start up. So that's the game plan on that.
The equipment that's in the attic?
Yes.
How do they, is that large equipment?
It is. Most of it's going to just be, is going to stay and be decommissioned.
That was my question. How do you get rid of it? So you just leave it there and move it aside?
Stay right there. If you've ever, have you ever been up into the attic?
No.
It's very compartmentalized and has to be per fire code, the way the building was built. So it's not a wide-open attic, like if you go up into your house. There are firewalls up there, and that's what makes it very challenging with the, if we were to take that equipment out and also if we were to go with the same type of equipment. Couple reasons we're not going with the same type of equipment, that being one of them. Two, that heating, so there's 11 larger handles up there now. We're not going with that type of heating and cooling equipment anymore. What we're going with is VRFs, which is what we have at the fire station, we have at the police station. That's the way technology is going now. It's not new. It's been out a while, and it's proven very efficient and reliable. So that's what we're going with over there. So most of that old equipment will be abandoned in place. It's not going to hurt anything up there. The new equipment will be serviceable. The IVs that'll be up there and everything will just be decommissioned up there and left in place.
Any questions from the board on the library project? Mr. Fennessy, do you have anything?
No. I do.
Okay.
So you're saying that you anticipate being done with the project in May?
In the springtime, yes. If, but that's all hinged upon equipment availability, which they're looking into. I don't have a final answer yet.
And since, what is the final cost?
Came in, I can, 1.87, I believe. 1.87 million.
Is there a contingency number built into that?
Yeah, I believe...
I knew.
Contingency.
Is it a contingency number built into that number? The 1.87? I think it is.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but 5% to 10%.
Okay. Thank you.
So I just had a quick question.
I can call Alfie John tomorrow.
So we don't have to take the roof off the library?
No.
Okay, good.
No. One thing they're looking at, and I don't have an answer from them yet, they were looking at a few different ways possibly to get those IVs up. One option was to go through the north wall, which faces the police station. There is a large louver there now, which utilizes some venting, possibly coming in that way. Another option would be to get it through the interior and open up the ceiling from the second floor and going up that way. So that's what they were looking at Friday. I don't have an answer to that yet, though.
That's great.
All right. And the siding?
Yep, town hall siding. Actually, right now on my desk is the RFQ, which between myself and the procurement officer, Shoby, we have worked on. So the RFQ is ready to go. The specifications have been written. So the RFQ is ready to go. The specifications have been written. Um, all I have to do is get together with Ashobi tomorrow, plug in the dates. Um, because it has to go by the contract value. It has to go to the central register. If we get it into the central register by this Thursday, it'll be advertised next week. Has to reside on the central register for public, um, at least two weeks. Um, so we'll plug in all those dates. One of the things I'm making mandatory, um, for anybody that wants to bid the job is it has to be a site visit. I'm going to set up a day. Potential contractors will come out, take a look at it so they know what they're, what they're bidding.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Um, so what we're going to go with, I, I looked at some different products. We're going to go with a vinyl siding. Don't cringe quite yet. Vinyl siding has come a long way. Um, some of the options were cement board, um, different options, but it's become pro, cost prohibitive for a few different reasons. Um, with the vinyl siding, some of the options are, and I don't know how we want to decide this. Um, we can put it to the board. We can put it to the town administrator. He can leave it to me. Um, w- once we cross that bridge, we'll, we'll deal with them. But we're leaving it open. We can choose colors. You can choose, um, different textures on vinyl siding. Um, what we have right now is a homosope board that's deteriorating. Um, that has a four-inch reveal, so it looks like clapboard. It is clapboard, uh, but not traditional cedar. It's the homosope material. Um, with vinyl siding, I propose we stay with the four-inch reveal. Um, it'll keep the same look, and then you can get different textures to that. If you choose, you can get a wood grain. You can get smooth to make it look like a plank, like it is now. There's some options and a multitude of colors. Um, a couple of things that may weigh into that is availability of product, as you know. Um, so once we, but those two options, when we decide on, shouldn't really affect the price. Um, so we can, you know, cross that bridge. It's nothing that'll have to be decided before the bid. So the, like I said, the specifications are written, um, and it should be hitting the streets next week. So I'm looking to get that done. They can do this work in the winter. Um, so looking to get that hopefully done, um, the beginning of the year.
All right, good. Um, questions from the board? Mr. Fantasy?
So, uh, if you could just update them on the trim work, is any of the trim work being done?
So the way I propose it right now, originally, back when I was, what we have, the trim that is on this building, around the windows and everything, all the decorative molding is in good shape. Um, so that will be painted. I did not make it part of these specifications because I don't know where this is going to come. We're in such a, um, volatile market right now. Um, the painting will go out separately, um, and obviously we really don't, you can paint if it's not frost on the wood. You get a better product if it's done in the warmer weather. Um, so we're looking at probably having it painted once the weather is, is more favorable for us in the spring. Vinyl can go on first. Painting can be done afterwards. Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board on this? All right. Mr. Sedentoff, thank you very much. We appreciate you, uh, updating us on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have a six-twenty agenda item on the King Richard's Fair traffic plan, but we are going to have to put that off a little bit now because we do have a public hearing scheduled for six-thirty. Uh, we're a couple of minutes behind on that. This is a continuation of a poll hearing, uh, continued from eleven fifteen twenty-two, uh, N-Star Verizon to install two mid-band poles on Shoestring Road. Are there any members of the public here to speak on this particular public hearing? All right. Well, that, we, we've moved on from that. Right now, we're on that, we're on, on the public hearing. So is there, do we have representatives from Verizon here? Eversource, I'm sorry. Step right up. I'll get my utilities right at some point.
No worries.
Yep, that's fine. Hi, I'm here on behalf of Eversource.
Hey, my name's Ryan Earl. I'm a community relations specialist for Eversource that serves the town of Carver.
All right, folks, and I, and I do have to say, just before we start, this is the third time we've had the public hearing on these particular poles. The first time, the maps were wrong. The second time, um, I believe Ms. Bogart brought to our attention that the poles were already installed prior to the public hearing. This, this can't happen. Um, and, and, I mean, it, it's your time. It's wasting the board's time. It's wasting the public's time. We, we have to find solutions here that this doesn't happen again because it's, it's inappropriate. And I just feel like I need to, to say that.
No, it's completely understandable. Were there specific questions or do you want to jump right in?
Nope, you can jump right in.
Um, I think I'll open it up for questions. Are there any specific questions about the work? Um, or kind of what else needs to be done?
Why did it happen again? This has happened in the past where poles were installed before the board approved it. And I think you were here and you said it wasn't going to happen again.
I did.
And I'm sorry, I'm frustrated, but it happened again.
No, I, I completely understand.
I think we're all frustrated.
No, I, and rightfully so. You should be. Um, like you said, it is a waste of time where this is a simple procedure where we should come in, present the work, hopefully get it approved, just based on the drawings and, and get out and not waste the public's time, your time. Um, we apologize for that. Um, I think with this one specifically, in what we talked to our crews about, is that there was a lot of private work. Um, and when a work order is submitted, there's always a rights process to determine if we need to go before a town to, to get the grant to location or an easement to do the work. Uh, in this situation, we were operating under the circumstance or the conditions that we thought it was private and it was a mistake on our part. Um, so we put the poles in thinking it was private, not knowing that we needed, uh, any specific rights to do this. And, and now we're here and it was a mistake and, you know, we apologize for wasting your time.
Last time it was a sorry, we did it too. We should be talking fines. How many times are we going to let this happen? We're going to let a company come in, do what they want and say, oops, we made a mistake. Won't happen again. Oops, we made another mistake. Either we need to change the process that maybe poll hearings aren't necessary, or we should be talking fines.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, poll hearings are required by state law.
So then we got to have them and we need to talk about some other consequence because we can't keep having, oops, our bad, won't happen again.
No, we, we completely understand your frustration, Ms. Bogart, and we apologize that we're here again.
Mr. Fantasy?
Uh, so I did talk to town council on this and fines are not an option, but the option would be to have them remove the poles, then go through the process and have them, if it's approved, have them put them back. Um, the town council said you can't deny the, the petition based on the polls already being in there. Uh, and he would suggest that you continue on, and if you approve the polls, then, then move on.
Thank you for looking into that for me, Clay. I know I had brought that up to you previously. Okay.
So, so the question, so obviously the application has to be filled out ahead of time. So in that application, we can't put that, something about a fine if it's not followed or if this type of thing happens again?
Yeah, there's no authority for that, for a fine. So unless you have a contract that you draw up with them and, and you have a lit, you know, some kind of liquidated damages in a contract, but, but it, it should be a simple matter. And it's ridiculous, like, like, as Bogart said, you know, to come back here and do this again.
Last time you said there could be a liability to the town if there are polls in that weren't approved.
Mm-hmm, and that's why you can pull them up, have, make them pull them up and then have the hearing and then put them back in.
So then at what, at the last meeting, we should have told her, you need to tell them tomorrow, go pull the polls up? And then that would have fallen on us to go make sure the polls are pulled up? This isn't going to work.
I know.
It's going to keep happening over and over and over again, and the town looks like a joke.
So, I'm, I'm sorry. What was your name again?
Ryan Earl, and I'm the community relations specialist for the town, so.
Did you spell your last name?
Yes, last name is E-A-R-L-E.
Mr. Earl, could you, could you speak to those in power that, that handle these things and, and get some kind of assurance for us that this won't happen again? I think, for whatever reason, it's happened twice here in Carver, and it just can't continue.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think we need some type of assurance. Can you, can you get a letter to our town, a town administrator that this won't happen again?
Yeah, and, you know, we're happy to meet, uh, outside, um, with town administrator or, uh, respective bodies just to, you know, go over our work plan next year and just to kind of have better insight into it. We're always open to meet. Um, our area operations manager couldn't be here tonight, but, um, you know, he, he was embarrassed that it happened and apologized to the town as well.
I think that's a meeting that might need to take place.
Absolutely, we're very open to that.
Things happen, but they can't, when they continue to happen, that's a problem.
I completely agree.
They're continuing to happen in this.
Well, and in general, you may want to look at who's making the plans because there were polls that went in on North Main Street and that hearing had to be continued too because those were at, maps were mislabeled also.
Okay.
So I think you guys need to do a lot of work internally.
Thank you for that.
To save us time, you time. That way we can avoid issues. If you can come in the first time, get a poll, approve, great, done.
Mr. Fantasy, can you make a note to try to put that meeting together? Thank you. All right, anything else? Mr. Carter?
Just a quick question on the application. You just stated that you thought it was private work and it was actually public work, but is the application state that it's private or public work?
I, I, I may have been confusing there. I think there's a lot of private work for this job in total for, um, what is it, for Shoestring and Jellystone Camp Resort. There's a lot of private work that a private contractor is doing, and we thought that it was just private.
All right, so maybe with, um, whatever document you put together, just list what is your internal control that's going to make sure that something like this doesn't happen again?
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point, John, because this is on a public way. I mean, it's not, it's not on private property, so it should have, you should have automatically known that you needed a poll hearing.
Yes.
I mean, if it's on the campground, that's, but this is on a public way.
I, I completely understand.
And, and it's very clear in the petition that it's on a common, the petition is along and across the following public way of ways, Shoestring Road. So it's very clear.
Yeah, there's no, there's no excuse for it.
No, none, and we admit that and we apologize to, to waste your time this evening.
Okay. Is there anything else from the board?
No, I just can't wait for the next one.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Well, I'll make the motion since we really have no choice but to approve.
We really don't.
Uh, installation of the poll. We usually, uh, we frequently ask people who are on the public way, is it going to block their driveway and things like that, but otherwise we have to approve. And next time, we'd like to approve it before the polls go in.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed?
I'm going to abstain because I'm not going to vote to put in polls that are already there.
Okay, okay. Four zero one. Thank you, folks.
Have a nice evening.
And please do stay in touch with our town administrator and let's get that meeting set up.
Absolutely, Mr. Fantasy and I will talk.
Thank you. All right. We will now go back to our six-twenty agenda item, uh, discussion and possible vote to revise the charge of the King Richard's Fair traffic plans. Uh, chief? Thank you for coming in tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, as always.
Why don't I read the, uh, proposed, uh, change in charge and then we can discuss it. Uh, let's see. Uh, the select board charges the previously constituted committee comprised of the town administrator, chief of police, chief of police, fire chief, EMS chief, emergency management director, DPW superintendent, to work with the re- representatives of King Richard's Fair to establish a daily capacity of visitors, which allows for the successful operation of the business, minimizes traffic impact, and does not negatively impact the ability of the town's public safety departments to ensure public safety services are deliverable. The board will remember a couple of meetings ago at our King Richard's Fair meeting, um, we discussed enhancing this charge because realistically, the, the group we had put together previously really only was charged with, with the traffic plan and not anything else. So the chief and the town administrator came back, got back together, and, um, chief, I'll turn it over to you to, to discuss it.
So that, that's basically what happened. We, we met last time. We talked about the issues that we saw this year and about some ideas on how we might solve those. And I think the next part of this is to reconstitute the committee and start some meetings with King Richard's Fair about how we're going to accomplish that. Um, we were successful in that approach last year in coming up with a traffic plan, a traffic plan that did, uh, positively impact getting vehicles into the, uh, into the parking lots of the fair and getting them off the road. However, we, um, looked at this year's problem with the oversale of tickets and too many people coming once those parking lots were full. So we've, um, I think we've identified a new problem and we need to sit, put our heads together and come up with a new plan for next year.
Okay. Chief Ryan, I'm sorry, would you like to come up and join us as well? Do you, you good back there? Okay. Uh, so I guess the only question I have is, is this charge broad enough that you feel it gives you the opportunity to do what you and, and, and public safety needs to do?
Well, I believe, yes, it is broad enough to do that. Um, and I believe that those discussions, working with the fair and working with our public safety departments, we can make, hopefully put together a plan that does not, um, have the result that we had this year several days where, uh, there were too many cars in the road, which is a hindrance to us providing public safety to the residents of town and to the visitors of the fair.
I did think it was a real positive. I saw that the fair had some advanced ticket sales taking place for, well, I don't know if it was officially Black Friday or not, but from pre-Christmas sales, and they were all dated sales, which I thought was, was, was very good. We probably do have to circle back with them and ensure that the numbers are appropriate, but, uh...
Right, and as I mentioned last time, I believe that those were some, uh, changes that we put in place with the fair towards the end of the year this year to try to, um, assist with this year's problem. And I think those solutions need to be expanded upon and continued into next year.
Questions from the board on this?
Just a quick question. So the traffic, um, setup, you think that would work? That doesn't have to be changed? It's more the capacity limit?
So it, it depends on how we solve this problem. Um, I think what we found this year with the new traffic plan dividing the road up into three lanes allows us to get traffic off of fifty-eight very rapidly and fill up three parking lots. Once those parking lots are full, the problem becomes there's no way to put the cars. So if the, if we set a number that accomplishes filling up three parking lots and that's it, then I think the traffic plan worked very well. If in this discussion, um, there's some reason why we can't just fill those parking lots, then we're going to have to look at, do we have to extend that traffic plan and, and where would we put those cars? So I, it's an answer I can't give you that. It's a discussion that needs to be ongoing and come up with a plan. But the traffic plan itself worked flawlessly when we were just filling those three parking lots. Matter of fact, we got cars off the road so quickly, the lines waiting to get, to buy tickets and get in was, were, you know, people standing there instead of, instead of cars waiting in the road. But the problem is once the parking lot's full, there's nowhere for the, you know, and cars are continuing to come, there's nowhere for them to go and they, they back up Route fifty-eight. So depends on how we, uh, we resolve that.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
And, and Wells? Uh, 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 I'm sorry, our, our community, a citizens' participation part of the meeting is, is, is ended. This is not a, a public hearing. Is there anything else from the, from the board on this? All right, I mean, I guess, uh, we, back when we had our King Richard's Fair meeting, uh, we discussed a follow-up meeting sometime in, in January to sort of see where we are. Do you still think we're on pace to be able to have that meeting?
Yes, once this, you know, if you vote to approve this charge tonight, I will set up a meeting with them as soon as possible and we'll get moving on this, on this process.
Um, okay.
So, at the end of the year, we did have a wrap-up meeting with some representatives, without a committee, and with representatives of the, where they had, where they had. They made some suggestions. Um, I think they're, they're looking forward to working with us again to kind of correct some of these issues that occurred with the traffic. And that may be limited in how many cars to the number of parking places that are in there. Um, it's also ticket sales that are specific for dates. I mean, that's one thing that we'll be looking to push, that they only sell so many tickets for October twenty-first, so many tickets for the twenty-second. So you don't have this influx of people coming to buy tickets at the gate. So, so I think we're, we're good to go on it.
Yes, I agree. I think we've got to balance out when people come. And having open-ended tickets allows people to come, whatever is the best weather day, and that doesn't usually work out. So we need to balance that out.
Yeah, and, um, you know, we, we, we can't allow residents to, to go through what they went through last year. So that, these things have to be resolved. Okay, anything else from the board on this? All right, is there a motion?
Um, I'd like to move that we revise the charge of the King Richard's Fair committee.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and, and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. And please, if there's anything else you need from us, please come back and let us know.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
End it up right away. Thank you. All right. Next is a discussion and possible vote on two warrant articles for town meeting. Amendments of bylaw one point one point two, town meeting quorum, and four point one point one, committee vacancies. This comes from a previous meeting that we had where we discussed the need to change these, these, these issues. One was the quorum. We'll remember, we'll all remember that we had a, a problem proceeding with town meeting. We had a quarant, quorum call because we have a seventy-five, we all thought we had a seventy-five person quorum for town meeting with a hundred and fifty person quorum for, for money articles. Turns out that once we, turns out we didn't. Turns out we had a hundred and fifty person quorum for everything. So we asked town council to go back and come up with amended language for that. And the other was an issue that came up in the bylaws for committee vacancies. It turns out that we had a bylaw that basically said if you missed three meetings of a committee for any reason, whether you were ill, you know, no matter what the reason was, there, there was no excuse. You were just automatically off the committee. So we asked council to come back with some amended, amended language to, to clarify that a little bit, and that's, and that's what we have here. So, Mr. Fennessy, would you like to talk to these a little bit?
Yeah, so the first one, the quorum bylaw.
Yep.
The new language will read seventy-five qualified voters shall be necessary to constitute a quorum at any town meeting, including special town meetings, provided however, that one hundred and fifty qualified voters shall be necessary to constitute a quorum for any vote authorized in the town to incur debt, and provided also that a number less than a quorum may from time to time adjourn the same. Is that?
So, I have a question. So, so Mr. Fennessy?
Let me, let me look at that a second.
No.
No, that's, I'm sorry, that, that was the old.
I was just wondering, shouldn't we have a phrase in there that says something like, very specifically, after?
Yes, yes.
The issue.
So let me, let me read the other one.
Indebtedness.
So there's a number of proposals on here.
Okay.
So seventy-five qualified voters shall be necessary to constitute a quorum for the purpose of opening any town meeting or subsequent session thereof, including special town meetings, provided, provided however, the voters present at a meeting at which a quorum was initially present may continue to transact business until the meeting is adjourned or recessed to another date, even if the quorum is lost through the departure of voters. Is that the one you're, you're looking at?
Yes, but I don't understand how that speaks to having a hundred and fifty for money articles.
Yeah, that, that was my point. So you can start, you can say that the minimum quorum would be seventy-five. For bonded indebtedness, you need a hundred and fifty, but it seems like you'd need a phrase saying after the issue.
Yeah, I think, I think what we need is council to kind of merge these two.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, that's the case. I know he went back and forth a number of times on this, but we don't, we don't want to change the quorum requirements. We just want to clarify the quorum.
That after we've done the bonded indebtedness, it's okay for it to be seventy-five again.
That's right, yeah. I don't think we're ready to go forward on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to go, have, send that back to council and get a little more clarification on that.
And then the second one was the, the vacancies, absences. The new language will read the appointing authority for any board committee or council may remove any member who is absent from three consecutive duly-held meetings unless one or more absences is excused by the chair or the vice chair in the case of absences by the chair.
That's good.
So then that gives leeway for somebody who may be going through a medical situation or perhaps National Guard duty, and they're out of the, the, the country for, for six months or something.
It's hard to anticipate why, why someone may have to, to, to miss a couple of meetings. Okay, are there questions on the bylaw article?
Yeah.
Mr. Carter?
I guess I don't, I get the point, but what is your definition of a duly-held meeting? That means that I've got a meeting scheduled and forty-eight hours before the meeting, I cancel it as chairman.
Yep.
Does that mean that that's not considered a duly-held meeting? So it's not one of the count of three?
It means when a, a meeting is called. So when there's a quorum of a meeting and you missed a meeting, then that's, that's one vacancy, one, one absence. But if the meeting is, is canceled, even though it was posted and then it was canceled, that wouldn't be a meeting of a duly-held meeting because it wasn't held.
My concern would be, we, we could go months. If, if, if a chair, if a chair canceled meetings twice in a month, twice a month, or twice in, for two months, we go two months without having any meetings.
Yep.
And there's no, there's no recourse. The town's business is getting done.
But that, but that's not what we're looking to address here. All, all we're looking, we had a, we had a bylaw that basically said if you were a, a member of a committee and you missed three meetings, for whatever reason you missed three meetings, you are off that committee. You could be in a hospital, you could be sick, as Mr. Fennessy said, you could be on the National Guard and have commitment. So there was no, there was no gray area there. There was no opportunity for a chair or the appointing authority to say, well, yes, that person missed the meeting, but they had a very valid reason for missing that meeting. There was, so I think the goal here is to, to be able to have someone say, hey, yeah, I know I missed those meetings, but, you know, I was ill or whatever the reason was and.
And the chair has the opportunity to excuse that absence.
That's, that's right.
So there's some discretion on the part of the chair. The way it was before, even if the chair knew you were in the hospital, they had to kick you off the committee, which.
No, no, I get it, and I think, and I was chairman and, you know, the rule is the rule, but if someone just called me so they couldn't make a meeting, I, I understood, you know, didn't. But I just, I'm wary about a committee not meeting for two or three months. That's what my concern is. And not having any kind of.
And we may have to address that in, with a different bylaw, but that, that's not what this is talking to.
Okay.
Okay, so I gave this a lot of thought because I, I understand the concern, but I think this is too loose because the way this reads is basically a chair or vice chair can hold a seat indefinitely for someone. Someone can just not show up ever again and the chair can keep saying, it's okay, it's okay for them not to come, it's okay, like, at, my daughters are in school, you can only have so many excused absences before, you know, the superintendent gets involved. So I think this is too lenient. There has to be some sort of limit and, and I get, like, right now, I just latched on, when you said National Guard, you said, you know, you may have a commitment. Well, if you join a board committee or council, you're making a commitment to the town that you'll be there? So if you can't fill your commitment to the town for any extended period of time, then you, I feel like you should recuse yourself and give someone else a chance who can fulfill that commitment. I think where it gets muddy is the three consecutive held meetings. If someone is in the hospital, there are some weeks when we have three meetings. Well, if I'm in the hospital, if I get sick this week and I miss our meetings this week, that's tough. Like, should I be removed because I was ill this week? I don't know, but if, if, if we have meetings every other week and I don't show up for a month and a half, well, I'm not really fulfilling my commitment. So I think the issue more is the time span of the three consecutive meetings. Three days in a row, that means you can't go on vacation. Like, if you have meetings back to back to back, but if you can't, if you can't be there for months, then you're holding a spot from someone who might be. I mean, look, we've got Ms. Ms. Cooney who came back a second time to be on a committee. We had Mr., we got people who actually want to be involved now, so I don't think it's right to give a chair or a vice chair a case to just, an option to just continue excusing absences. So maybe there's wiggle room, but I, I, I don't love how it is. I think there's got to be more refinement to it.
So maybe having something like upon the vote of the remaining board members, the majority vote of the remaining board members, it can be when multiple absences could be excused?
I don't know.
You know?
But, I mean, it's the whole having three without a timeframe. Again, there are times we have three in a week.
Because you had one on Friday, you had one on today, so that's two.
Right, but then like.
In five days.
Right, but then like John referenced, there are some committees that don't meet for, for two months, so them missing three meetings is them not showing up for six months, but us missing three meetings could be us not showing up for a week, so there's, there's a disparity there. So I think there has to be some sort of steadfast, like, you got to show up, but maybe it's just not written right this way.
Well, again, this is just, if somebody misses three meetings, this is not, this is three meetings, that's all.
I know.
So.
Right. No, I see that this needs revision, but I, I, I think this goes too far the other direction. You kind of, you kind of see my point? Like.
I, I have a question, and I know this has been brought up in the past on the duly-held meetings. So if a meeting, and I believe in the past some, there've been some committees or a committee that didn't have enough members to have the committee, so therefore it wasn't a duly-held meeting. It was a called meeting, but it wasn't a held meeting. But let's say someone is, does miss three in a row and there's no excuse, but the committee can't meet because that person would have made a quorum. So there's no recourse, so this one person, if they didn't show up for consecutive meetings, like John said, it could be months and months and the committee just can't meet. Now, I know that's not the absence by law, but is there a part of what is technically called a duly-held meeting or?
Duly-held means that it's been opened, you know, with a quorum. So that's a duly-held because they, they held it. They could adjourn it right away.
Yeah.
But going on your point, Jim, one of the, that brings up a different issue, that suppose a chair wants to get rid of a, of a appointed member on their committee and knows that that person is going away for two weeks to go on vacation and holds three meetings in a row over that two weeks, and that person missed those meetings. Does that constitute a vacancy and he's off the, off the committee? You know, it, it's a tough, you know, you, you try to parse these words to, you know, to come up with something reasonable. Because there's so many scenarios that could happen.
Well, if someone is removed from a committee, they're not necessarily barred from reapplying. So if, if I join the National Guard and I go away for six months and I get removed from the dog park committee, Lord knows we're ever going to have a dog park. When I come back from the National Guard, if my seat's still vacant, I can reapply, or if whoever got my seat is up next June, I can reapply for it. It's not like I'd be banned from the dog park committee forever, you know? It would just be I couldn't be there, so someone who can be there gets my turn. But you bring up another good point. There's a whole lot of murkiness that should be addressed.
I think we're, I think we're getting away from what this particular bylaw does.
Okay.
There may be murkiness in whether committees hold meetings or go too long without holding a meeting or, or, or things like that, and maybe that needs to be dealt in another way. All we're talking about here is trying to amend this bylaw.
Yeah.
So there's somebody, again, it has to be excused. Misses three meetings, they're not automatically off a board of committee. They could be off a board of committee. There's nothing here to say they couldn't be off the board of committee. The chairman or the, the, the appointing authority could say to them, I'm, I'm sorry, but whatever is the problem with your schedule is, this just isn't working, so you're off the committee and we're going to re, we're going to appoint somebody to replace you. They could do that. All this is saying is that not automatically off the committee, that there's, the appointing authority has some discretion. I think that's all, all we're looking to do here, is give the appointing authority some discretion.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm stuck.
Any other comments here?
So, if I'm reading this correctly, so the appointing authority for any board committee or council may remove any member who is absent from three consecutive held meetings, unless one or more absences excused by the chair or vice chair in the case of absences by the chair. So the appointing authority, authority is the person that will, will be removing that member.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. And then the chair or vice chair, if the chair's not available, can excuse one or more absences.
And it presupposes that the chair or vice chair is talking to the town administrator.
Correct.
So that he or she doesn't, you know, kick the person off.
And I want to emphasize too that what you're talking about is something that would go on the warrant for the annual town meeting to discuss and vote on.
Right. Okay, because there's really two, well, there's two issues. One issue's being addressed here, and the other issue that I had brought up before was a meeting not being held due to a committee member not being available. So that's a separate issue altogether.
Separate from this, yeah.
So this is for held meetings because my concern was a committee, a committee or two that wouldn't have enough members to have that meeting. So let's say they want to have the meeting this week, and then they try to do it again in two weeks, and then like, two weeks, and then if it's, if it's a three member, you know.
Well, again, that's an issue that.
That's a different issue.
May have to come back to the appointing authority to, to deal with, but that's, that's not this issue. And maybe, Mr. Fennessy, maybe you have thoughts on that, but that's two separate issues to me.
Yeah, if you want to address that issue, you, you come up with a language just specific to that, to calling meetings. You know, one of the, one of the problems with, with saying that if there's a called meeting and there's no, not a proper quorum, so the meeting's canceled. Who was it that gets charged with the one vacancy for that meeting? All of them? Or if two were available to go to that meeting, but we're told, well, there's no meeting because we don't have a quorum, do they just charge the other three? And how do you know which ones were actually going to go to the meeting and didn't?
I think the meaning, the, the, just behind this is if there's a consistent member that doesn't keep, doesn't show up.
But then that should fall back on the appointing authority anyway.
Right.
You know?
Okay. Again, sorry, I know it's a different issue, but it kind of ties into this.
It does, yeah.
No, that, that's, that's fine.
Because I know we had it last year.
Yep.
So.
That's how we discuss them. Okay.
We're not going to solve every equation.
No.
Not, not tonight anyway. Okay. Does the board feel comfortable voting on this?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the revised article four point one point one for town meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. It's four to one. And Mr. Fennessy, if I could just go back to the town meeting quorum by law for a minute, I think council submitted two proposals, and you may have read the first proposal. I think the second proposal may actually address what we were trying to accomplish. Why don't I read, read that one and see what the board thinks? This is, this is town meeting quorum by law proposal number two. Seventy-five qualified voters shall be necessary to constitute a quorum at any town meeting, including special town meetings, provided however, that one hundred and fifty qualified voters shall be necessary to constitute a quorum for any vote authorizing town to incur debt, and provided also that a number less than a quorum may from time, from time to time adjourn the same. I think that may be more accurate.
Except that it, it, less than a quorum would mean less than the seventy-five voters?
Yeah, I know, so if there were.
It should be, I think it should say, after the bonded indebtedness, the quorum reverts back to seventy-five.
I think there might be a little issue there on that.
Didn't, I'm trying to, wasn't there an issue last year where we had a quorum call? We didn't have a quorum, but we were still able to, I, I thought that council said you were always able to adjourn a meeting.
Yeah, you can adjourn.
And I think that's what this says, the, less than the quorum may from time to time adjourn the meeting. I think that's all.
Yeah, this needs to be looked at again.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we send that back to?
There's enough questions here too, yeah.
And and try to get that on a, on a future meeting. All right, so we are, next. We have discussion and possible vote on the code of civil conduct. Uh, Mr. Fantasy proposed this at the last meeting, I don't know if everybody had a chance to read this and is prepared to vote on this tonight or or not, do people feel comfortable with this, or do they need, they need more time? Does anybody need more time?
Nope.
Okay, uh, clear discussion?
Do we have the guidelines of the Carver Police Department, Fire Department, and EMS Department Rules and Regulat- the ones that are footnoted on page one? If they have their own, I'd be curious to know what their codes of conduct are, if they have them, if like, how close it is to these.
Yeah, I don't.
I didn't know they had their own, so.
If they do, yeah, and I think they have their regulations, you know, which govern their code of conduct. On how they react as a police officer, as a firefighter, or.
Yeah.
EMS.
I saw it footnoted and I thought, oh, they have their own code.
People wouldn't make complaints because they were at a scene and there was things going on, whoa, that violated the code of conduct. You know.
Okay.
There's other conducts, so obviously, not a.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve the, uh?
Sure, I make a motion to approve the code of conduct.
Civil conduct?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous.
So we'll, we'll get this out to all the, uh, committee members.
Every, I was, that was my, everyone's going to get a copy of this, right? Okay, great, thank you. All right, next, uh, approval of discriminatory harassment policy updates. Add wording to the first paragraph, including Crown Act wording as required by Massachusetts Fair Employment Practices Act, uh, general law, chapter one fifty-one B. Uh, Mr. Fantasy, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, so the, um, there was a change in the law, it's called the Crown Act, and it relates to um, natural and protective hairstyles that are used by people. And they can't be discriminated against for that purpose. So if you look at the draft, uh, it's the old, it's the same discrimination harassment policy that we have, but down on, starting on the fifth line. After, um, fourth line says, um, after race, color, and then it says national origin. The new, new, uh, provisions are ancestry, ethnicity, and then it goes on, religious, age, disability, criminal records, genetics, military or veteran status is new, sexual orientation, and then other new ones are pregnancy and pregnancy-related conditions, natural or protective hairstyle, or participation in discrimination complaint activities retaliation. So that's a new language, this is, makes it consistent with state law. So, and we'll get that out to all the personnel too.
All right, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the new discriminatory harassment policy of November twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous, thank you. Uh, next is a vote to amend, uh, Article Five of our policy, uh, it's the policy on citizens' participation. Uh, this is something I asked Mr. Fantasy to put on the agenda, and basically, uh, this came from, I I know Mr. Hoffman attended the, um, open meeting law session we have with KP Law, did anyone else have a chance to attend that?
I've attended them in the past.
Okay, so one of the things that came up at that open meeting law, um, session was a a question on, uh, agenda policy, and I think as most of you, all of you know, I when people come to up to speak and put this citizens' participation, I prefer to just let them say their piece, um, whether it technically is something that's on our agenda or not, I I I'm pretty flexible on that, but one thing that came out of that open meeting law session was that that's not permissible, that we have to stick to our agenda policy. And right now, our agenda policy says that, uh, citizens' participation, people that speak will speak to something on the agenda. And I just think that people ought to be able to let us know what they're, what they're thinking about, if they want to complain on, about traffic somewhere, they should be able to complain about traffic somewhere and uh, it may not always be pleasant, but I think we learn a lot by having people speak to us about, about different things, so, uh, there's some proposed, proposed language on here in citizens' participation. Uh, I can read it if you like, but all it basically does is remove the section that says you need to speak to a speak to something on the agenda, why don't I just, why don't I just read it? Um, uh, citizens' participation, there will be one session of citizens' participation at each regularly scheduled meeting of the select board. This session will be held after the Pledge of Allegiance and the Community Prayer. The session will be five to ten minutes in length, and no speaker may speak more than three minutes. Uh, personalities, politics, personal attacks, personal issues, and pending litigation are not appropriate material, and we will will be ruled out of order by the chair. The chair is authorized to issue warnings to the offending parties and to determine if requests for future agenda items are appropriate. That basically is our current, current citizens' participation policy with, um, apart relating to the.
I just, just a quick point, it says, um, personalities, politics, personal attacks, and personnel issues, not personal issues.
Um, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I spoke, thank you for correcting me.
Just make it clear.
Um, any thoughts on this?
I think it's great.
Yeah, I agree.
I think it's good too.
Yeah, everyone good?
Yeah, makes sense.
All right, is, that's easy, is there a motion?
I move that we, uh, modify citizens' participation, um, aspect of our agenda policy as written.
All right.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous, thank you. All right, uh, next is a discussion and possible vote to authorize the town administrator to appoint special labor council at the town administrator's discretion.
So quick question before we move on?
Yes.
So what we just voted on, that's effective our next meeting?
That's effective at our next meeting, yeah, and I think probably.
No, that's all.
You know, it's a, it's a change, it's a pretty big change, and, you know, we can always revisit it, if if it proves to be a problem, we can always revisit it.
No, I think it's a great thing, I just want to make sure the public knows that it's effective next meeting.
Effective at our next, our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Right, sorry.
Oh, so.
Regularly held meeting.
Regular, all right, regularly held meeting. Well, it's not, it's not held until it's scheduled, so, all right, uh, Mr. Fantasy?
Okay, so this, um, this is a request to, uh, seek, uh, labor council for specific cases that come before me, uh, and that are personnel-related. Um, we generally use town council for that, uh, but there are special labor council that specifically deals only with labor and personnel issues. Who may be better fits for certain types of situations that we have. So I'm asking that the board authorize me to, to, uh, bring on or hire, uh, certain labor council. Uh, just for labor, specific reasons, not for outside that.
All right, thank you, is there a motion from the board?
I move to authorize the town administrator to hire labor, labor council for labor and personnel cases at his discretion until a further vote of the board.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, discussion?
Will we get to know like what firm it is and how much it costs?
Yeah, 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 it won't be any more than what we're paying now.
It, it's not gonna be a secret, he's going to the house.
Yep.
Well, just want me, would, you, people ask about legal bills, and I don't want to be caught, I don't know who we're using, I don't know how much it's cost, we got, I gave him a blank check. So, okay.
Nope.
No, it's no blank check.
Just a quick question with regards to our current legal firm, it's, they don't have the ability to address all labor-related issues?
They do have, um, attorneys that do labor relation things, um. I don't want to get into, uh, quality versus quantity. But that's one of the issues.
Okay. Okay, uh, anything else? All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, all right, and Mr. Fantasy, we're back to your town administrator update, I think you had one item left, the Town Hall IT and Technology Advisory Committee update.
Okay, so this, we had, um, you know, we had a committee put together to look at the needs of the town hall, basically, uh, the, this building, uh, this room, uh, to kind of modernize it into getting, uh, a better, better, uh, product for, uh, watchers at home, and went through some of the issues that that revolve around this building itself. Uh, with wifi and with, with, um, communications, like Zoom meetings and other things. Um, so we had a, we had one of the state bid, um, companies come in to do an evaluation and give us a ballpark figure of what it would cost to modernize this, um, and gave us a couple of quotes. Um, one, and a kind of a, uh, just a basic quote for just basic things like additional monitors and, and, um, I think they were, had a podium and other things, but so the, the, the big quote is, um, packaged with a neat board, it's called a neat board, um, podium, that would have computer built in, that, that you could address things on the modem and on these screens throughout, so no matter where you sit in the audience, you have a clear view, now whether it's something like a Zoom meeting or even training for our staff, like we do in-house training, and to have everybody in here and be able to watch without, you know, looking over in the corner there to see, you know, see what, what it is. So some of those, um, and it depends on what we do, another thing we want to do is address the issue of these cords running across the floor here, and if you walk behind it, it's very dangerous if you don't know to step over these cords and, and even these cords coming out of the, the cable. So that would be all recessed into the, into the ground and so forth, into the floor. So the, the high end is about fifty-one thousand, the low end is like fourteen thousand. But there's a dramatic difference between the high end and the low end, and this might be something utilizing both available budget money, as well as maybe a little upper money that we have, um, to use for that, so. So we're still looking at it, we're getting another bid, and it's not a bid, but a price. You know, we want to get different ideas on how to address this, have better wifi and better, better, again, product for everybody. So it's ongoing, um.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
So, Mr. Fantasy, how does it, do they address how the public will view? So supposing you're giving a budget demonstration up there.
Yeah.
As it is now, when you're at home, you really can't see it.
Right, that would go right through the system, so they'll be seeing what you see.
Good.
Or what the people in here see.
That's, that's really important, yeah.
So important, yeah, okay, so, that's great, and and it's not here, but do you have an update on, um, uh, recruitment of people for boards and committees too, and and didn't, didn't you do some?
Yeah.
You and Elaine, you and Mrs. Weston able to accomplish some, some movement on that?
So, a couple of things, um, and the, the tax bill, um, notification go out with the, did that go out yet? No, that's going out the end of March, so, so we developed a, or she developed a form, uh, not a form, uh, uh, pamphlet, basically, to go out with the tax bills, saying what, how they can link in to our website and go and apply for one of their positions. Um, also, when in one of the, um, housing groups, uh, we had that advertised. Um, I brought it up at the council and agent meeting, um, and hopefully, you know, getting it out like this and having it on a website and and Facebook and everything else, you know, we're getting more people with some interest, and thank you for having the interest, uh, and hopefully more people, you know, look at that as helping your town.
I want, I want to thank you for that, so I know.
It's just, you know, yeah.
That's one of the things we had, we had tasked you folks with, with trying to find new ways to, to recruit people for our boards and committees and, uh, any different ways we can find, cause we need, we need new people.
I know you mention it every, beginning of every meeting, you know, that we have openings and it's right there on the website.
All right, a- any questions from anyone on, on that, okay?
Wait, John, Mike?
Can I get a, I don't want a lot of order, I got a couple of questions on, on numbers two and three that we kind of talked about, and I just want to make sure I understand the follow-up.
Hmm, sure.
Okay, so with regards to the Attorney General's decision in Great Meadow, could, we talked about the town administrator updating us on any changes, but could we actually have maybe the chairman from the battery storage, um, committee come to our next meeting, and maybe the Board of Health come to our next meeting and kind of give us a, you know, one-on-one with where things are at and and what's in play, just so we can get it from the horse's mouth?
We can see if they're real.
Because questions come out and, and, and you can answer what you can answer, yeah. I'm just throwing that out there, so that makes sense.
So, so that would be Bruce Mackey?
Yeah.
What was the other one you said?
Uh, Board of Health, Kevin Ford.
Okay.
Would that be for number three?
Yeah.
Probably the earth removal committee.
Yeah, really, that's what it comes on, the earth removal, yeah.
I thought you mentioned, I thought you mentioned he was brought up.
Yeah, he, because he got the call.
Oh, okay.
You know, that day, um, and I believe it was Friday, I know Friday, right before noon time, um, he got a call and talked to Van Johnson and, and was working through that, so. But we can, you know, I'll talk to him, I'll get somebody in here.
See who's available, anything else, Mr. Carter?
No.
All right, anybody? All right, uh, let's see. Minutes licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting, uh, there are none, uh, the minutes of eleven one. Is there a motion?
Move we approve the minutes of eleven one twenty-two, twenty twenty-two.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
I'll abstain, I was not at the meeting.
All right.
I think I have to, I was there for the original via remote, and then I wasn't there for the main meeting, so, I'll abstain as well.
And then we have the minutes of eleven fifteen.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of eleven fifteen, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous, thank you, uh, select board note, we have a note from, uh, Ms. Bogart, uh, discussion about drafting articles for the twenty twenty-three town meeting that would revert the zoning changes approved at the twenty twenty-two town meeting back to what they were before the twenty twenty-two town meeting.
Yeah, I know that, that you and I spoke, and you said a lot of zoning stuff comes from planning board, um, but I, we were told that the, the North Carver project looks like it might be falling through a bit, and then, um, the chair of the Finance Committee put it out on Facebook that the project was just done. So since so many of our zoning bylaws were changed specifically for that project last year, I think that it would be important for, for the town, and if it has to start with us, even if it qualifies as zoning, then it should start with us cause ideas have to start somewhere, like, we're allowed to have ideas too. Um, I think we need to talk about changing the zoning back to what it was before the last town meeting, since those challenges, those changes were made for a specific project, which as of right now, I'm, I'm under the impression isn't happening, so if we leave the zoning in place right now, stuff can happen by right uh, to an entity we don't know about, so I think we should just talk about getting it back to what it was, since the reason we changed it no longer exists.
All right. All right, uh, select board announcements, Mr. Carter?
Um, I don't have any.
All right.
I'll sit.
Ms. Bogart?
I want to thank the Recreation Committee for giving out gingerbread houses.
All right, Mr. Hoffman?
I'm all set as well.
All right, Ms. Ewens?
I'm all set too, thank you.
All right, I just have, I just have one thing, I just want to, um, just thank our town administrator and our health agent, Kevin Ford. Um, there was an issue that came up a couple of weeks ago, I won't speak to the issue, I don't want to I don't want to get anyone mentioned, but, um, there was an issue that came up uh, during the afternoon one day, it was a particularly busy day at town hall, I I remember it because we had a meeting scheduled in the afternoon of a subcommittee, we had to cancel the meeting, because there was so much going on that nobody could get to the meeting. And, uh, a couple of residents reached out to myself about something, I know they reached out to at least one other. And, uh, a, a couple of residents reached out to myself about something. I know they reached out to at least one other member of the select board because that, that member contacted me. Uh, I called Mr. Fantasy. Um, Mr. Fantasy dropped what he was doing, contacted the health agent, Kevin Ford, who was actually gone for the day. Uh, he came back and, and together with Mr. Fantasy, they were able to, to deal with the issue and help out a resident. I thought that was really, um, over and above and, and should be mentioned. So I just want to, Mr. Fantasy, thank you and please thank, my, pass my thanks on to
Thank you.
To Mr. Ford. So, uh, that's all. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. And I think I didn't mention that our next meeting is twelve twenty twenty-two. So I'll pop that in there before we have our vote to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you.